Since it's 7:30, I'm going to call this evening's village board meeting to order. We'll start with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I have a motion to approve the village board meetings from the meeting of August 18th, 2022? I'll make a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Additions, changes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? Carrie. We have a public comment on the agenda from Marcia. Lamarande? Okay.
Marcia, if you wouldn't mind stepping up to the microphone there, so, thank you.
What he said.
Okay. I want to thank the board and Mayor Clark for hearing my appeal. I am here on behalf of the Baldwinsville VFW Auxiliary. Last year, we had, the board was kind enough in the village and Chuck McCullough to approve us to have a flag. We did a flag donation. We sold flags and posted them for Veterans Day week at the corner of Anide Street and Genesee Street. It is because we are building is closed, we are limited with our fundraising and we do service 24 veterans a month in Baldwinsville with groceries. And so, we are in need of fundraising in order to pay for the groceries that we supply them. So, I'm asking the board for consideration of us to be able to run that event again this year. November 6th, we'd like to place the flags, which is a Sunday. And they would stay in the ground through November 13th, which is a Sunday. So, through the Veterans Day week.
Are these the small flags again?
Yes, the small flags. Nope, nope, they're going to be the same, the same that we did last year. With each flag will have a banner of the service the veteran was in and their name.
Anybody have any questions?
Which actually, last year was very successful. We sold 100, for the first year, we sold 100 flags. So, we did very well and, you know, it really helped with the things that we do in the community.
How many do you think you can accommodate down there?
Well, the land, we thought 100 would fill it up, but when you get down there and you... Actually, we had the Boy Scouts come in, help us place all the flags. So, we're, you know, also trying to bring other community organizations in to help us with that. And, I mean, you could probably put three or 400 down there, probably. But, you know, 100, I think, looked nice and we're hoping for more this year.
Excellent.
Marcia, does anyone have the village check your contact information?
I'm sorry?
Does anyone have the village check your contact information?
Who has my contact information?
Who doesn't?
Yeah.
Okay, because I've got an idea, something I want to talk to y'all.
Oh, great, that would be awesome.
Something may happen to my stepmother's hometown in Tupper Lake that they do, that I'm going to show you one of those seconds.
Oh, that would be great, thank you. I appreciate and welcome all comments and suggestions, absolutely. So, thank you.
Do we need a motion to authorize the VFW to put flags out there? Or just tell the codes enforcement officer not to take them down?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, could I have a motion authorizing the VFW Auxiliary to place flags on Veterans Day at Point Park? For the dates of?
November 6th through November 13th.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Great.
You have it all in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you so much.
Carrie, thank you. Trustees' comments. We're going to start with Nate.
I'll just stick with the agenda.
That's it?
Yeah.
Oh, he sounded excited about it, too.
Can I keep Ruth?
I'm going to stick with the agenda, too.
I'm going to add a motion, I guess it's item E, to authorize the DPW superintendent to forgive a portion of the sewer bill for a property on North Street based upon usage calculations. Other than that, I'm sticking to the agenda.
Just the agenda for me?
Yep, I will stick to the agenda, too.
Okay.
Just wanted to remind people that school's back in session Wednesday, so just plan accordingly. Drive a little more carefully, you know, and just realize that buses out, so it's going to be some delays there for you, so.
So, leave for work five, 10 minutes earlier.
No, it's half an hour.
Depends where you live, it might be half hour, maybe five, 10, but yeah, just dead mind. And otherwise, I'll stick to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
A couple of things. Got a notice from the people that have been removing the water chestnuts from the river. They've exceeded 900,000 wet pounds of water chestnuts. And they thought they were kind of wrapped up and all of a sudden, a whole mess of water chestnuts floated down the river. And I think it's clogged the entrance to Cross Lake. There's other issues, so they're going to continue removing water chestnuts, which is an ongoing problem. And any of you who are boaters know how it clogs up the river, they come in from both sides. And they're not very good when they get around your water, around your propeller. So, a lot of work this summer, volunteers included. And it's an ongoing issue. I don't know how they're ever going to stop it, but I appreciate the fact that somebody has taken the initiative to try and get rid of what's there. And they'll probably be back next year, but I just wanted to point out, I don't know if Chuck was going to mention it when it's his turn, but some people were questioning why we hadn't notified them earlier about paving streets, which streets were going to get paved, you know, to tell them which day it would be, except that almost to the day that it happened, that paving happens, that we find out about it. They're working other places, they get done a day early, they get done a day late. Chuck gets a call, we'll be there Tuesday, we'll be there Friday, whatever. And then we can notify people, but we can't tell people a month at a time when they're coming, why there is such a factor. So, I appreciate, for the most part, people being patient and courteous and appreciating the fact that their streets are going to be a lot nicer when this gets done. Remind people that on the 17th of September, The Taste of Baldwinsville, looks like it's going to be another great event for those people who aren't familiar with it. No admission charge, it's at Paper Mill Island from noon until 10:00 p.m. They'll have entertainment all day long, stuff for the kids from 1 to 5. What they've done is, again, no admission charge, so you can walk out and see what's there. And all the restaurants will offer you a, just a taste of what they offer for a buck or two. And if you want a dinner-sized portion or full slice of pizza, you can get one for a regular cost. And you wander around, there's a whole mess of restaurants, so you can try everything. If you take the sample, you can go pretty much all the way around and still not be full. And it's a great event out on Paper Mill Island. I had the privilege, last week, my sisters, both my sisters are involved with PAC-B. Cindy happened to be at Lavender Festival up near Rochester and ran into Roosevelt Bowie. She knew he was a basketball player, she didn't remember his name. So, she walked up to him, and if you know my sister Cindy, it wouldn't surprise you that she would walk up to him. And she said, "I know, I know you, but I can't think of your name." Roosevelt Bowie, "Okay, I'm sure my brother knew, would know who you were. What are you doing now?" He was handing out stuff for Jayheim's fundraising group in the city. And he kind of stood out. I mean, he's 70 foot tall, basically. And she said, "How would you like to do an interview on PAC-B? We'll update people with what you're doing for kids. And my brother will ask you some sports questions." And so, we were on with him for 45 minutes. A half hour, we talked basketball. In 15 minutes, he talked fishing and how he uses fishing to get through the young kids. He was an absolute delight. Couple of very good stories that he told about his time at SU, the recruiting, his relationship with Jim Bayheim. So, if you get a chance on PAC-B, I think you'd enjoy it. Bruce, I know Bruce is a big SU fan, he probably would really enjoy it. SU football starts Saturday, 8 o'clock, so fall us here, folks. Summer's a bit, football starts, summer's over with. And I need to request an executive session, personnel issues, so add that to the end of the agenda, item F. That's all. Thank you.
Okay. I need to apologize, I saw a public comment, I didn't see if there were anybody, other citizens wanted to make comments. I know you guys are probably going to address the agenda. That leaves you, Sally, do you have anything you want to say tonight?
Yes.
Okay, come on up.
Surprising. I was very curious why the planning meetings are not on the meeting schedule?
Well, I'm looking at the mayor on TV.
As far as I know, they're listed, always listed.
Nope, they are not listed on the calendar. They have a small sentence in parentheses on the planning board page that says, "Planning meetings are the fourth Tuesday of every month," and that's all. It's hard for people to find it if you don't know where to look.
I dare say they'll probably be corrected.
We can really fix that.
Sure will. Add it to the calendar, yeah, that would be good.
Okay, well, thanks for pointing that out.
I watched the meeting, you know, because I came on a Thursday. And it wasn't then, it was on a Tuesday. So, I have some concerns about the progress that has been made on the Philip Street apartment in terms of things seeming to get done and approval letters being sent from people who've never contacted anyone in the neighborhood. And I'm a little peeved that someone from Radisson is proposing this project be built in my neighborhood when it would never, ever, ever be rezoned in Radisson.
Okay, hi.
No, I'm just saying, that's the fact.
These are some comments that went to the planning board?
Mm-hmm. John, you were there.
No. The chair? The chairman?
No. No, the state senator?
They have letters from John Mannion.
Oh, yeah. And Dee Francisco.
And it's like...
Who was it?
It's not Dee Francisco.
And McNamara. John, John Mannion and Bill McNamara. But we were, you know, their offices didn't contact, as far as I know, they didn't post anything about. So, I don't understand why elected officials are sending approval letters for properties that they don't know anything about.
I suspect that it was requested.
Right.
And no one in the community contacted them and said...
Because we didn't know.
Well, they're, I'm sorry Sally, they're represented 365 days a year.
Right, but we didn't know that they were going to be weighing in and that that would be weighed in the factor of consideration for the progress that has been made.
I believe, and I could be wrong, and I'll let these gentlemen correct me, but those are, if it's approved, those are letters that will be used to support other aspects of the project.
Right.
That doesn't affect the approval process by the village, correct?
And we, you know, I heard that, you know, the village has the amenities to support 140 more apartments. We don't even have a grocery store on the Lysander side of the village. Today, I walked, I drove to Tops at the breakneck, breakneck speed of 11 miles an hour. And it was bumper to bumper at 11 o'clock on a Thursday. Went out, it's not a school day, so I don't understand how there's no traffic problem when it takes me 30 minutes to go to Tops.
Okay.
I'm just...
No, I hear your comment.
I'm just a little frustrated. I was very impressed with the Christopher community, the project on Smokey Hollow Road. They listened to a lot of the comments and they made accommodations. And they changed it in a way that it looks like it's a doable thing. It's not that I'm anti-people coming to the neighborhood, I just, I'm frustrated that...
Well, I appreciate the fact you've been coming, and I'm going to tell you, you need to keep coming.
You're right.
Because that project has responded to input from residents.
Right.
This project, if approved, and once again, I haven't even gotten to that point yet, will have time for public input and reaction. That's the process.
The other thing I wanted to mention before, I have ADHD, so...
Well, that's okay.
If the agenda could be added to the calendar, so people know what's being discussed at the meetings. Like...
We did that for the last meeting.
On the calendar?
On the calendar.
Yeah, Jody put it on the calendar.
There's a link?
With the, all the site plans, everything was on there.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Oh, for planning board or this meeting?
For the planning board meeting.
Oh, I didn't know what she was speaking of.
I do not see that at all.
Okay.
It wasn't on the calendar, which is where I was looking for the information.
Right, that's where we put it, or that's where she put it.
Under documents, we have the different...
Okay, under documents, should be under...
It says, you just click on documents and it'll says a big thing, agendas. And you click on agendas and it gives each board's agenda.
But I'm not like, on the calendar, if there could be a link with what's going to be discussed at the meetings? I know this is a lot, I'm sorry, but I just, I get concerns and they all have to...
That's good.
We appreciate you.
We'll check it out.
But we have the technology, we should use it.
Okay. I want to know what book you're bringing, Nevada Bar.
What Rose forgot. I went to school with her. Well, not, I didn't know her, know her, but we went to the same university at the same time.
Okay. Well, I was just being nosey.
She writes, she writes good mysteries, too.
Next, we'll move on to our department heads and start with our attorney.
I'll just stick with the agenda.
Okay.
I, too, will stick to the agenda.
That brings us to Ruth, who doesn't just stick to the agenda.
Well, first, I want to thank Rotary of Baldwinsville, who did a really wonderful event for our folks under Meg Van Patton's leadership. It was a nice evening and everyone had a great time. Also, September is National Senior Center Month, so we have a very busy schedule happening. So, please take a look at your newsletter, which is always posted on all the municipal websites. And we do have two big events coming up. One is a golf tournament, the first time we're attempting this, and it seems to be going very well. And the next is our Walk for the Woods, which is on September 17th. And I do want to thank the community, because we have had tremendous support from the local community for both of these events, and we do appreciate that. So, come and check out the Senior Center, during National Senior Center Month, and try one of those events, if you like. And that's it, thank you.
Thank you. Chuck, DPW?
Yeah, we were able to get our tub grinding in, so all our brush got ground up. We had problems getting the machine back, and there's been so many trees down this year with the ash pour. And they were able to get in this week and all that cleaned up, so that was great. The paving is starting Tuesday. We got pushed back a couple of weeks. And I know it's going to be a problem with school, but we'll get through it. The letter that Dick was referring to, that called about notifications, we don't have a lot of luck when we notify people a month out because they forget. And it really, we are in short notice because you're held hostage for the paver. And when it rains, the paver gets held up and lots of times it's short notice. But we do have better luck with, you know, if people know like a day or two before, because they remember. But the grinding was last week, they got the roads done. And we're going to be paving, weather permitting, Tuesday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and maybe part of Thursday. And we apologize for any inconvenience, it's going to be a little tough, but once it's done, it's done. Grinding was on the playground at Community Park, we're 98% done with that. Came out great. And the Lions Club, their swing set is up, and I got to tell you, the gentleman that worked on that project are older than me. They were just incredible, the way they worked all day on that. I was really surprised, because I thought there's no way they're going to do something with stuff. And they hummed right in their event on and wrote down, and spread them off. We helped them what we could, but they did, they did a great job in tech, they did a great job in that stuff. The Tarrick Creek project, there are some struggles this week, but it's, it's come out great. We probably got another week to work on it there. We put the new culvert in over Warner Ave, people in Warner Ave have been great because the roads need to close. Getting people in and out's been a little difficult, but it's gone very well. It's opened back up again, it's now in place and the water's running through it. And we just got a bunch of cleaning up to do. They've already hydrocated some of the banks, got some, got some straw on it that areas are going to look. They went in and cleaned the banks up, they cleaned all the dead wood up, we got the dead wood out of the creek that we could never get out of there. And it's been a good project so far. Other than that, if there's questions?
Move on to our codes office.
See, tonight, I'll just stick with the agenda.
Okay. That puts us to the police chief.
I will do the very same.
Okay, excellent. Moving on to pending business. Discussion regarding the proposed local law to change the zoning district for property located at 19 Philip Street, skipping the tax parcel numbers from its current designation to R1 to R2. And do you gentlemen want to address us at this point?
Okay. James Trancher, CHA Companies, we are the engineer of the project for CBS. Justin Morando is with me as well. So, we're at the last planning board, so it is not a company from Radisson. I live in Radisson, so if she was listening to the meeting, I talked about like...
That's what they said.
I drive, and so, I'm the engineer, did, we did the traffic studies, etc. So, we initially requested R1 to R2 based on conversations that had been had with members of the village and mayor and stuff prior to submitting application. Based on conversations, there was conversation, R2 versus PDD. The recommendation came back from the planning board, which I, I'm not sure you have received or not received, to have it a PDD. You know, we are happy with that as well. If the board so desires to look at a PDD, there's some components of the project that going through the planning process with the planning board should you move, because then it gets referred back to the planning board. We will look at lot layout, storm order, and all the traffic. Some of the traffic concerns aren't really from the project itself, it's other traffic concerns within the village at the intersections, 48 and 31. So, we'd be more than happy, we really haven't had much dialogue back and forth. We have a plan, really requesting a zone change, and then you go through the process looking at the architecture, design grading, and those improvements. So, that's where we are right now, so. It is a legislative action, so, you know, if you take the recommendation, you can change it from R1 to, you know, whatever you would want to do.
And that's where our attorney is kind of counseling us on how to do this.
I've spoken today, I did speak with the attorney for the developer of the project. And he also indicated that they would consider amending to go to a planned development district. The difference between R2 and a planned development district is that a PDD legislatively needs some rules as part of the legislation. And that's one thing that you can do in a planned development district, that is, you plan it. So, as a result, my, if the board wishes to do this, I would, what I would do is to table the discussion further and ask for the input of the planning board as to the elements that should be included in draft legislation to amend the local law to be for a planned development district, PDD. In order to do that, we would need to republish, because it would be a substantial change to the legislation as proposed, and we would have to have a new public hearing.
Since Bob's been our attorney, he's cleaned up our PDD process. And they've all become local laws for the past, there were these things floating around.
One question, Bob.
I keep thinking we have to vote on, but we don't have to vote on the R1 to R2 somehow?
No, you can go ahead and amend that. And then, then, once the amendment takes place, then there'll be a public hearing. The law says that you have a certain time to, you're supposed to vote on local laws that are submitted after a public hearing. However, the law doesn't say what happens if you don't. So, there's, unlike the planning boards or on certain matters, or zoning boards on certain matters where there's a presumed approval, that doesn't happen with legislation. So, with the consent of the, which we have, the consent of the developer, we will postpone, because the only one who could complain would be the developer, the owner. So, we're going to postpone that until we come up with the appropriate modification to the local law.
And do we need an application from the county, at least that they would like to understand?
That's okay, that's really, that's been done as far as the discussion. So, that's, the modification's been approved by the applicant, so we can just move forward with that.
Does that sound right to you?
Yeah, so, the only thing, I think, we need to be referred back to the planning board, so we can start the process, because really, when they come back to you, you're going to see a plan in place. If it's a grid system, you know, 140 units down to 80 units, 70 units, now they're Phase 1, down to 50 units. Those are the type of things, height restrictions, you know, setbacks, all those things sort of through the process, you know. So, I concur with your attorney, it's, you know, a legislative action. You could do this without a request from us of saying, hey, we want to go from R1 to PDD.
Yeah, I was just saying, we have a motion in front.
Oh, yeah, no, so, we're happy to go with a PDD and be referred back to the planning board and start, you know, a couple, probably, months or meetings of going back and forth with them on modifications to the site. Then it would come back to you with, here's a plan with setbacks, layout looks, and then you have the final crack at all those things as well.
It will take us a little bit of time to create the PDD legislation.
Yeah.
And then, quite naturally, it's headed to the planning board.
No, we'll work with the planning board to come up with the draft language, which is really what we, what I've tried to do with the PDDs that we had, and put them into our code book, because a lot of them were just on a site plan that nobody knew really what the rules were, so.
And then, there would be a public hearing on...
On the PDD.
On the law that we'd be enacting?
Yes.
And then, we would decide if we wanted to make it a PDD or...
That is correct.
Okay. And if we, so yes, off to the planning board.
And just correct me if I'm wrong, but part of that PDD, part of the law, is the site plan?
It is the site plan that the planning board approves, and then obviously, you, as the legislative body, would have to make that a part of the local law.
Yeah, I mean, the site plan has, and the review by the planning board and the, also, our village engineers have multiple things that don't appear in the legislation, such as the water runoff and perhaps collection ponds or whatever there is, and the traffic issue. So, it needs to go back to them initially to come up with their ideas of what it should look like. And then, the plans come in with the details, and then they would approve the site plan as part of that once the PDD is approved. So, we'll work together on that.
Okay.
Go ahead and just throw something there, just so we're clear on this, we keep saying 140. What we're, our intention for CBS Housing is a 70-unit project, our Phase 1. This is when we went through the whole development process, we were talking about what it could be. I just want everybody to kind of like, to keep saying 140, 140. That's a long pipe dream kind of down the road. We're starting off with a 70-unit project. And the realistic timing of all of this will, any best-case scenario, say if everything moved along like it should properly, you're talking two years down the line before this would even open.
The PDD process may change that number.
Correct, it could go down, absolutely.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to kind of, I know traffic's an issue, I know traffic's being worked on from previous meetings we've met here, too. But this is kind of a long run, and we're kind of working with you guys along the way. So, I just wanted to kind of be clear that, you know, 140 is an overwhelming number. Our intentions are 70, but obviously, we'll be working through the PDD process and spell it out for everybody.
Any other questions? If not, James could ask you, how Joe's doing on Lock Street?
That's not on the agenda. What? He's doing great, you know, you got 52 units, they're all running up, it's great. And so, you know, he really wants to get... And so, you know, he really wants to get to the next phase of things. He really was hoping to start construction on single-family houses and, you know, having his broker start selling those, because there has been some interest, and then the other units that would wrap between, it's something, but if people...
Who can ask that question?
Oh, I know, it's been a tough one, because they are very hands-on builders. If you drive down River Road, take a left into Timber Banks, you'll see he's spent the last two years, you know, working on a very large structure there. So his plan is to be back here and get that wrapped up, because this has been a very successful project for him in terms of the first two units that have been up, and he'd like to wrap that up and check another box.
Yeah, we'd love to see him back in town.
I know, he would love to, but he misses him.
Is there any chance we can get that property at least cleaned? I mean, it looks like a junkyard down there. You know, it's all overgrown, and the neighbors have said, you know, if we did that, they'd be yelling at us to clean up your property. I mean, somebody could come in with a mower and just, you know, cut that thing down once and...
I can talk to him about that. When we bought the properties, they had like four houses that hadn't been cleaned and had big Xs on them. So, you know, we've had transformed stuff, but I will bring it up to the alberages to mow. We can at least do it, you know, in the walkway and those type of areas, you know. And I'll get right on that as well.
Thanks, James.
No problem.
What they've been mowing is several feet back from the sidewalk and along the trailway. It's a, it could definitely be cleaned up. The hay wagons, we're getting complaints on the hay wagons sitting there and...
The police chief will make sure that it doesn't become a public park out there, and, you know, we'll put a couple no trespassing signs out there.
Put those out there. Those things are there though right now. And kids could play on those right now, and that becomes a liability. You better not have those things there, where a kid would be tempted to play on a hay wagon and have it be cleared out, so.
Okay. Welcome to the village board meeting.
It's been a while since we've seen each other.
Always good entertainment, James.
I typically try to. But I just want to add one other thing. Radisson did change the, they rezoned at the corner of 31 and Drake's Landing, a piece of property where YMC was gonna go from residential to four apartments, so.
And the neighbors were up in arms.
Not, they were, but what happened, they got approved by the Town of Lysander. So going to the communities, there's always things in growth, and people see, and I just used from communities, and I said it, you know, White Pines is still out there. Yes, Micron announced a small $15 billion plant, but they're still in the game for this, plus others. And where are people gonna live? They're gonna live on the 31 corridor. They're gonna live from Van Buren, Lysander, Village of Balden Hill, Clay, Cicerone. There's gonna be, at some point, a lot of jobs here, because I have confidence in that. So we want to complete the development here. We'd like to see their development come in and a bunch of other good things, because it's, we want to see a growing and vibrant community, where you do have to wait in traffic sometimes, because, you know, there's a lot of places in the country, when you travel, we do engineering work all over, that you set a traffic signal for three minutes and 24 seconds, you know, and that's acceptable for a turn in traffic. We sit for 22 seconds and we lose our brain, type of deal. So traffic is a good thing, folks, and having people move into your community is a good thing. It's just how engineers, planners, and other things adapt to those things. So when development comes, things are designed appropriately. So we look to do that for this project. We look to complete the Phobes Island project with you as well, and bring good things to the village. And work with the school, and hopefully they can figure out some of their traffic issues, which we heard at the last planning board meeting. They know they have an issue, you know, COVID changed how people get to school. I never thought I would buy each of my kids a car to drive to school, but that, you know, that's what you do, because they don't want to ride a bus, you know. And so it adds a lot more traffic onto the roadways than what was there before. So it's good seeing you all, and we're happy to do a PDD. I'll come mow it myself, if Greg can come help me with the weed whip, we'll get it done, you know.
I'll see Chuck drive by, yeah.
Hey, you will. I'll see Chuck drive by, he'll wait for me, but we'll get it done for you guys. Okay. So there's a hay wagon out there, because I'll be honest, I haven't been out there.
There's a lot of things.
Okay.
Don't make me, Joe.
We should have a separate agenda, next time you're coming to the meeting, ahead of time. Trasher agenda.
We would love that.
We'll get into Balden Hill next time.
Oh, Balden Hill, yeah, we can talk about that, too. We'll be here shortly for that one.
Okay.
I did have one word. At the planning meeting, they said that if you voted, if you turned down the PPD, the project was just done, and that you had the authority to vote against it tonight.
No, I don't believe they know what they're talking about. There is no PDD proposal yet. We can't vote on something that doesn't exist.
If you're switching it from an, I mean, we don't want it changed from an R1.
I understand.
So if you change it to a PPD, that's changing it from an R1.
And that will be before the public, when that occurs.
Okay.
But we're not there.
Okay.
We're going to be, clearly. We will be there at some point. But until the legislation is drafted by our attorneys, and we're not there at this point.
Okay, because there's a woman named Janie who was saying all of this.
We need to see what the project's gonna look like before, you know, the PBD's gonna give us that idea. Because an R1 honestly allows for building anyways in that area.
Right.
And the PBD may be more beneficial to that area than just allowing an R1 to come in at some point.
The planning board was saying that even if it was single houses, they thought the site might be best served with a PDD anyway. But we're not gonna create a PDD that nobody asked for.
Yeah. I could just interject, I think what was being said was an option that this board had would be to take the motion on the proposal the way that it's been given, and vote it down and say, we'll come back. But the, and that's something the board could do. However, with the cooperation of the applicant, it makes more sense just to keep the matter before the board, so that it can be taken back to the planning board, instead of having to go through the whole application process again with the same paperwork and everything. So this, to me, my estimation, makes more sense to do it this way.
So basically, what is changing is the request from R1 to R2 is likely changing from R1 to PDD.
Right.
That's not been approved.
We're saying we don't want it changed from R1. I just want that on the record, you know, like...
And there'll be a public hearing. And everyone can come out to that, and once they see what's going to be proposed, and everyone can have their voice.
Well, people have been here to say that, but, you know, it doesn't seem to...
With all those comments, we're on an R2. The PDD may be different than what you have considered before.
What I've heard people talking about is they didn't want to change from R1. You know, so PPD, R2, we don't want either one. I've spoken to a few people.
Okay.
Well, bring them out for the public hearing.
We're trying to.
There will be one, so we'll have a chance to talk on something different than what we've already seen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So we're all done with that item for tonight.
We'll have a new business.
Moving on to new business. Item A, a motion to set a public hearing for Thursday, September 15th, 2022, at 7:30 PM to consider a proposed local law to amend, excuse me, Section 324-14 of the Village Code to reduce the speed limit on River Street from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour.
I'll make the motion to propose the local law to amend Section 324-14 of the Village Code.
So the motion is just for the public hearing?
For the public hearing, yeah.
Just at the public hearing, right. I'll second it.
Okay, any discussion? Okay.
There had been a letter written to me from a resident of River Street, and concerned about the fact that people ignore that it's a one-way street, that they go fast down the street. Could it be lowered to 15 miles an hour? Well, the chiefs had explained, we can't do that, that state doesn't allow that. But the state just had a change where they allow you to lower a specific street to 25. So that's why this is on the agenda that way, so.
So on September 15th, anybody who's in favor of such a thing might want to come and share that with the board. And if there's people that don't want it lowered, they should come and share that also.
That's right.
Did we vote? No, we're all there. Opposed, carried, so there will be a public hearing. Item B, discussion possible motion authorizing the mayor to sign the intermunicipality agreement for the fuel use with the Balden Hill Central School District for July 1, 2022, through June 30th, 2027 term.
I'll move it.
I'll second. You'll second, all right. Discussion?
Second.
Bob, have you reviewed this?
I reviewed this. It is identical, word for word, with the agreement we had in 2013 and 2017. So there's no changes, and I don't think there's any changes that are needed.
In that regard, is the police and DPW, pardon me, do you guys use that, that too?
Everybody's got a fob, don't you have one?
I do not.
Every village vehicle.
Okay.
There was a discussion at some point of, oh, the village engineer, about having an agreement with the Town of Lysander or something, because of the DPW garage and things, but I don't think they had ever one anywhere.
No, everybody, I mean, all the fire departments, and most everybody goes to a school now. Lysander may be going to the school, too, I'm not 100% sure, but I believe they're up there also now. It's a good program.
Chuck, how do you handle small things?
We have, we have, you mean a small gas can? The Volvo's got its own key.
You drive it all the way out there?
No, semen has been so far away, we have a truck with a tank on it.
Okay.
And we run that up, and that fuels the loaders. It's an issue to get up there, but, so that fuels the loaders and the smaller vehicles.
The lawnmowers and the...
Yeah, and the lawnmowers. The gas cans and stuff, they have separate keys for that, you have to drive up there. But we took one of the old pickups and put a fuel tank on it, the back hole of the water department.
Okay.
That little mini truck that runs around and does that.
Do we have a motion?
We do.
We do. Any other discussion? No. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Item C, discussion possible motion up to approve the Balden Hill Women's Gardens Club request to donate 23 self-watering hanging planters at $169 each for a total cost of $3,887. This donation will complete the replacement of the old-style hanging baskets.
What that is, is they have some now in Four Fowners. When it gets to be 90 degrees, they have to be watered every day. And it's just a nightmare, getting people coming on the weekends and do that. So they have a reserve on them, and they're working really well. And they paid for those, and now they're offering to pay for some more, so it'll be really good shape. But they just have to accept the donation.
So this isn't an increase of more, it's just better?
Replacing, yes, it's better ones, yes.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Motion appointing James S. Serenkowski as a part-time police officer with effective date to September 3, 2022, at a rate of $28 an hour. Make a motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Final motion to authorize the DPW superintendent to forgive a portion of a sewer bill for a property located on North Street based upon usage calculations, if needed.
Moved.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Leave that up to Chuck and Moe, intelligent to figure out. Item F, executive session. So can I motion retire into executive session?
Move. Second. At 8:14.
At 8:14.